All right, good evening. I would like to call to order the city council meeting of the Lakewood City Council in Lakewood, Colorado on September 12th, 2022 at 7:25 PM. For those tuning in on the web, the Zoom ID is 849-57320840. If you're calling in at 720-707-2699. And again, that webinar ID is 849-57320840. Pound, pound to get you into the meeting. I will now ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Great. So just as a quick note, we are starting a little bit late. We had a meeting prior, a study session prior that ran late. And now we have a, or we'll be going into a special swearing-in ceremony. And we'll have a short reception for us. Everybody else can hang out as long as they'd like. But for this group, we'll come back and get to order. So while we get ready for the pledge of allegiance, we will have a moment of silent prayer as we always do. But I would ask tonight that we remember our friends in Arvada and police, police officer Dylan Vecoff, who lost his life yesterday. And certainly such a tragic situation for our folks, for our neighbors, and a second one that they've had to endure in the last year and a half. So we want to send the best to them. So if you'll please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Clerk, please read item five.
Item five, swearing-in ceremony for municipal judge.
All right, this is a great opportunity. And I'm going to ask our presiding judge, Nicole Bozarth, if you want to come down. I know somebody else may actually be doing the swearing-in if you want to do an introduction. And for folks that are here to join our new judge, almost judge, Ms. Easton, if you want to come down and take pictures, you're more than welcome to. Certainly, you're more than welcome to come behind us. But if you want to come down, then we'll do the oath. Welcome.
Good evening. And thank you again for this opportunity. Just by way of introduction, this is Kelly Easton, who has been selected as, we're honored to have her as our next, one of our next full-time judges for the Lakewood Municipal Court. So. Could raise your hand.
I, Kelly Easton.
I, Kelly Easton.
solemnly swear or affirm.
solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of municipal judge.
Of municipal judge.
For the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
For the City of Lakewood, Colorado.
To which position I have been duly appointed.
To which position I have been duly appointed. Congratulations.
While you're, while you're signing that, we'd love to, when you're done, give you the opportunity to speak. But we're really excited to have you in this role. And I think this group is just so impressed with your ideas and what you want to bring to our courts and the uniqueness and innovation that will continue with our presiding judge as well. So I think we're in good hands and would welcome if you'd like to say anything to the community.
I just want to express my gratitude. You all have such kind faces, which really means a lot when you're the person standing in front of all of you, especially when you're very nervous and you're wanting to put your best foot forward. I am extremely grateful for this opportunity to serve a community that I love so much and with a group of people who mean so much to me. This is a fantastic community, and I can't wait to earn this job every single day and to earn the trust of this community. Thank you guys so much.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And we are going to go celebrate you. This group will celebrate for 10 minutes, so until 7:40. You all can party all night long, so.
I have to work tomorrow. Please don't party.
All right, so we'll take a break.
Thank you.
Decrease the amount of light our buildings emit, minimizes unnecessary bird deaths, prioritizes human safety, saves money by reducing energy consumption and supports Lakewood's sustainability goals. And whereas taking these kinds of initiatives to protect birds can even earn Lakewood recognition for green, bird-friendly practices. And whereas the Lights Out Colorado program is voluntary and encourages businesses and community members to turn off all non-essential exterior lights to reduce light pollution so as to provide safer, natural migration routes for birds. Now therefore, behalf of the City Council, the people of the City of Lakewood, I, Adam Paul, Mayor of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, by the virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Lights Out for Bird Mitigation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Woman, a few words.
Woman, a few words.
Well, in the scheme of things, I mean, I heard that you were talking about short-term rentals and everything. Lights out may not be a big issue, but it is important for birds and it can be a matter of life and death. So, I just, it really does not take much just to shade your lights so that if it is a safety issue where you are, shade them so that lights point toward the ground and not out to the sky.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. Mayor Protembinsen, thank you for bringing that forward as well. Okay. So next up, we have general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all persons calling in or are in chambers observe the decorum of council chambers. The call-in number was read earlier and you can raise your hand now if you wish to speak online. For those who are speaking here, you'll have a little timer and when your time is up, it'll turn red. If you're on the phone, at 30 seconds, you'll hear a, and then you'll hear a ding again when your time is up. We ask that if you're calling in, that you please give us your name and address or name and ward. And if you haven't had a chance to sign up in chambers, please do so now. With that said, we have a special group who came tonight to talk about an issue of community interest. And so they have actually pooled their time, although we were going to try to give them 10 minutes anyways because this is very important for our community. So I'd invite Jenny Nikaido down with her team from Terumo BCT.
Good evening, Mayor Paul. And City Council members. My name is Jenny Nikaido and I've been a Green Mountain Lakewood resident for 31 years and I'm currently employed with Trumo Blood and Cell Technologies.
My name is Vahraprasad Mani. I am the Vice President of Global Quality for Trumo Blood and Cell Technologies.
Hello, and I'm Jessie Doan. I'm a Lakewood resident, but I also am the sterilization operations leader. Mayor Paul, City Council members and community members, I work for Trumo Blood and Cell Technologies, a medical device technology company that manufactures products that are used to collect and process blood and cells. We make critical products that help save lives. If you've ever donated blood or have known somebody who's received a blood transfusion, you've likely interacted with our products. We've been a member of the Lakewood community since we were founded as COB Laboratories in 1965. We employ about 2,000 employees here in Colorado and one of the largest employers in Lakewood. Sterilization is the last step in the manufacturing process, but plays a critical role in ensuring that the products are safe to the people and the patients who they go out to. As you may know, the EPA recently announced its effort to conduct community engagement to share with the community updated risk information about ethylene oxide, ETO, and what the EPA is doing to address it. I'm here today to share with you information about our sterilization facility and what the EPA and our facility is doing to reduce the risk. You may have questions about our facility and the EPA's recent activity, which I'd like to address. So what's happening at Trumo Sterilization Facility regarding the EPA press release? The sterilization facility is the most regulated part of the company. Both the EPA and Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment are clear Trumo is in compliance with quality regulations and standards. We have robust emission control equipment in place that destroys over 99% of the ETO used at our facility. And we're committed to compliance and operating in accordance with all environmental health and safety regulations. In developing the most recent computer modeled risk information, the EPA uses worst-case scenario inputs that assumes a person breathes the air in the exact same spot for 24 hours a day continuously for 70 years. To reduce the theoretical risk identified, the EPA is currently reviewing regulations for medical device sterilizers like Trumo and will propose updates to the regulations later this year that will reduce the risk. With all of that said, even before the EPA released its new theoretical risk information, we had begun the process of installing a new emissions control system that will reduce the emissions even further than they are today, or approximately 70% or better. The system is already installed and will be operational in 2023. We will continue to work with the EPA and the CDPHNE to identify other opportunities to reduce emissions even before the EPA formally revises the regulations. So why is there a potential issue now and has CDPHNE looked at our facility? EPA came up with a new benchmark risk value, which was released in 2016, but was used in the 2018 NADA. And I'm sure you've heard of that, the National Air Toxic Assessment, and the most recent mathematical risk modeling to identify areas for further investigation. This was done at a national level. Further investigation has been done by CDPHNE. CDPHNE performed a comprehensive risk assessment for our facility in 2018. And as part of that assessment, CDPHNE looked at the actual incidence of cancer in the cancer registry and they found no actual increases of cancer rates around the Trumo facility compared to the rest of the state. The other question you may ask is, has there been any other actual measurements of ETO at or around our facility? The answer is yes. Over 400 air measurements by four separate groups have been collected in communities surrounding Trumo BCT. One of these groups was the Air Pollution Control Division, the APCD of the CDPHNE. These studies have shown that levels of ETO in the air in community areas near Trumo BCT were all within the range of levels of ETO measured in other areas around Denver and the state, in addition to having similar levels measured in many other areas of the country where there are no ETO sterilization facilities. So what is ETO and why do we use it? For many medical devices, like those that are manufactured here in Colorado, ETO is the only viable effective option for sterilization. For these types of products, alternatives such as steam, radiation, or other sterilants do not achieve the needed levels of sterility assurance, or they degrade the material the products are made from, rendering them unusable. More than 50% of medical products are sterilized using ETO, and for many of those, it's the only known option to modern science. Even though 50% of healthcare products are sterilized using ETO, the healthcare system uses 1%, less than 1% globally of all ETO manufactured. Also, ETO is present in the air around us from natural and man-made sources. It's created by plants, animals, and even human beings. ETO is naturally occurring and even, in fact, cars driving down the road emit ETO, your gas grill emits ETO, cars, buses, and even the human body. So what has Trumo done to reduce ETO emissions and what is it doing now? Well, we continue to proactively move forward with voluntary measures. In 2018, even though our emissions were well below permitted levels, we implemented additional controls not required by regulation to further reduce emissions and validated by CDPHNE. As I mentioned earlier in my remarks, we invested in a new state-of-the-art emissions control system that will decrease emissions substantially amongst other proactive initiatives. What we do is important, and I want to give a real-world example of this. There was a facility, a sterilization facility that was shut down in Illinois and the impact was a shortage of pediatric breathing tubes. There's real supply chain issues with this kind of conversation and the supply chain implications for access to lifesaving and life-improving medical technologies. Sterilization is the last step in the manufacturing process and is required for lifesaving medical products to be safely used. We rely on clear, consistent, scientifically-based rules and standards, and we rely on regulatory agencies to update regulations as technology and science evolves and improves. So if I could leave you with three takeaways. Number one, we make healthcare products that save lives and what we do is important. Number two is we've been in compliance with our permits. We have been far below, about 85% below, state and federally permitted levels and are making changes to further drive down our emissions because we think it's the right thing to do. Number three, when you're looking at the EPA press release, it's important to remember that it's a mathematical modeling and it is part of the EPA's public engagement for rulemaking at the national level with the intent to update federal regulations. For medical device sterilizers like us, and when CDPHNE looked at the actual data, there was no increased rates of cancer around the Trumo facility compared to the rest of the state. We would like to extend an invitation to keep an open dialogue with the City Council and answer any questions, comments, or concerns you may have. I'd like to ask, please submit questions either through the City of Lakewood for community members or contact us directly. Thank you for allowing us to provide some additional context to this technical matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Joan Poston? And that's all that has signed up in chambers. If anybody wishes to speak, please see Mr. Robb. And then we have a couple of hands up online.
And first, I'll put this here and you can look at it. It is an update for the City Council and facts around this GSA bid. I'm not sure when these came out and I'm not sure if it affects the bidding because I think maybe there might be some kind of clock on it. With this, I've discovered a couple of things, that there is a provision for building a bridge using TIF money and that there is a 20% affordability, but apparently there is some kind of vestiture, which means we don't have to look at the will of the people and what they wanted with the ordinance that was passed by people voting. When I read the poster of the GSA property solicitation, GSR 2035, I was genuinely surprised. The history of this property goes back at least 15 years. There was a federal proposal of building a residence for unaccompanied male illegal immigrant children, which was rejected as there was no resources from the City of Lakewood to support such a project. There was a Colorado Coalition of the Homes Project in 2018 that failed because of the lack of finances and community support. And now, once again, taking another bite of the apple, there is this land up for bid. There is an interest in putting a large compound of affordable housing on this land because of the modification of the strategic growth initiative. It seems that there is no reason to worry about that, even though it is the public will. And I believe that this land is significantly contaminated and it is, I just believe that it is systemic racism. And I have reported this to the Health Department. There is a new office. It is the Office of Health Equity. I believe that putting people of lower socioeconomic and people of color on land that is contaminated and you would not want your children or you to live on is systemic racism. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in chambers wish to speak? Okay, Ms. Duffy?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Diane Duffy, Ward 1. Most of you know me. I'm the president of the 2,000 residents of Daniels Wellchester, which is adjacent to Terumo. In addition, I'm an employee of Terumo. I'm there every day. Our company has good values and they care and they've been a good neighbor to us for all these years. They were there before Lakewood was a city. Now, I'm one of the people that is there 24 hours a day. I work there and I live two blocks from the sterilization facility, as does four generations of my family. Three of my grandchildren live there. This is an important issue. The numbers, as the EPA and as Trumo has presented, are very, very, very small. But if it's you, it takes on a completely different meaning. So this is an important issue that we look at. I mean that from the bottom of my heart, from my family that lives there. So we will take a really good look at this. I know council members have been for a tour of the facility and we're relying on you because the contact has not been for those of us who are affected by this. We have not. I'm there because I'm an employee, not at the sterilization plant. So we're interested to see the statistics. We're interested to see the numbers and we would like you to really look at the testing results. It's important. It's important to us. It's important to our families. This is an important Lakewood issue. Again, I say Trumo has good values and they are very, very well-intended. And let's face it, they do cure cancer in children. I mean, let's face it, that's huge. And I'm very, very proud to be a Trumo BCT employee. But since the outreach has not been to the neighborhoods and the people that are affected, we're relying on you to look out for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in chambers? Okay, Mr. Robb, thank you. Mr. Comden, you are up.
I would like the Council to kind of think deeply about what they spend their time on. The last meeting you just had an hour or so ago, you were spending a lot of time on short-term rentals. Now, with the Housing Policy Committee, I would assume that they would be spending time on things like trying to get more attainable housing, getting more affordable housing, you know, trying to figure out why the rent is so high, you know, all these big issues that affect a lot of people here. But no, we're focused on short-term rentals that have been, you know, this has been brought up way before I moved here and way before I've been commenting here. And it, I don't know, it just seems like that this issue affects a couple hundred people. It feels very fringe. Not to those people, of course it isn't, but I feel like there's bigger fish to fry. And so with the housing policy spending, I don't know, a couple of years on it, I don't know, I think we should focus on some bigger items. And I don't know, how do we get these items onto the lists of items that are brought up by the Housing Policy Commission? Because it's just, I'm waiting for some time to be available for the big issues affecting me and my friends. And I don't know, this just seems like a lost opportunity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Did she? Ms. Ortiz, you are good to go if you want to unmute. Star six.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, there you go.
I'm sorry, I've got COVID and my brain's a little screwy right now. But I'm Mary Ann Ortiz and I'm president of the Applewood Valley Association. And I just wanted to provide some comments on the Trumo EPA report. Back in 2018, when that EPA report came out, Trumo called in the neighborhood organizations to their sterilization building and we watched, we were given a really great tour. We watched videos about a little girl who'd been cured of cancer. It was very inspirational. Made me proud that Trumo was in our neighborhood. There wasn't a lot of fault accepted as far as these EPA reports. On the tour, we were showed these necklaces that the employees wear that will give off some sort of signal if they're exposed. And I thought that was really interesting, how careful they were about their own employees. Well, now in 2022, there's another bad report. The community has heard nothing from Trumo. The new filtration system that we were told about in 2018 is not working yet. I have heard that it's not really installed, but Trumo seemed to say that it was. I guess the main issue here is there's no community involvement. Applewood Valley is affected. West Colfax that we're trying to get revitalized is affected. Maybe the community can have those necklaces to wear that would signify that we're exposed. I guess I want the City of Lakewood to help us with this issue and I want Trumo to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else online that wishes to speak? Go ahead and raise your hand. Star nine. Okay, so we will close public comment and certainly thank everybody who came out. I would remind the community that there is a meeting on Thursday, September 22 at 6:30 PM that I believe the EPA is hosting in regards to the issue at hand that you heard about tonight and certainly appreciate Trumo coming tonight as well as the neighbors and would encourage future dialogues with the neighbors, as you've heard tonight, would like to be engaged in this process as well. So we can make sure that we have all of your information, we can get that to City Council and make sure that they can connect the community with appropriate people. Mr. Comden had a comment about housing policy and, yep, we certainly want to get to affordable housing as well. We've just been kind of working on short terms for a while and it's all very important and while it is for maybe a couple hundred, but it is something that we need to move forward on and see that happen going forward. So, thank you. Okay. So, the clerk, please read item seven.
Item seven, presentation, update on lodging license program.
All right, Ms. Hodson?
Yes, thank you. You initially got this presentation on February 25, 2019. This evening, you'll be getting a presentation and an update. I'd like to introduce Commander Alish, who back in earlier, he was Sergeant Alish. This is Commander John Alish, who will introduce Commander Bates as well as Sergeant DeReza. So Commander Alish, please.
All right. Good evening and welcome. And it sounds like the commander just rode 485 miles across the state of Nebraska?
State of Colorado.
State of Colorado for S.H.I.E.L.D. 616 and is here today. So, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. It's good to see some familiar faces that were with us since the beginning of this journey and those new faces who got your first experience maybe within March and now we're back based on the requests you made. So, first of all, I want to introduce Commander Bates, who's with us tonight. He is our special teams commander, so he oversees the CAT team that does run this program for you all. And I want to introduce my former partner, Mark DeReza, who was a huge help these past three years in getting this program off the ground. He's going to run you through the update and then we'll be glad to answer questions. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, members of council, for having us here. Get this up a little higher. Is everybody able to hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so as we mentioned, this is going to be just an update on where we are currently with the lodging license ordinance. As it was mentioned, this was originally approved on February 25, 2019. As part of that approval process, the council developed a calls-for-service, basically calls-for-service-per-room ratio of 1.89, calls-for-service-per-room in each of the motels. Again, that was to make it even across the board, so it was evenly weighted depending on the number of rooms in the motel. Any of those rooms that are those facilities that had a call-for-service ratio at above 1.89 were required to meet with members of the community action team. And the idea was to try and help them develop strategies that would make them more successful in bringing those calls for police service down. So we're again addressing, trying to limit the problems and limit the calls for police service at those facilities. Once the facility was, got its license, it had 12 months to reduce their calls-for-service to try and get it below that 1.89 calls-for-service ratio. At the end of those 12 months, any of those facilities that were above 1.89 were subject to inspection. So those inspections were conducted by members of the community action team, building inspectors, fire marshals, to address any of the structural issues at those motels and then brought to the licensing authority for a hearing. As you see, this is basically just a summary. I think you guys have all seen this before, but this is some of the progress we made just during that first licensing year from 2019 to 2020. Four, nine of our top 14 facilities saw a decline in those calls-for-service. So the blue bars there represent the first year that we looked at the numbers and then the yellow represents the end of their first licensing year. So we did see pretty good progress just in that first 12 months of that licensing program for those facilities. One thing that we noticed was that we had the buy-in from ownership that had made a big difference. The Mesa Motor Inn was one of those that saw a tremendous improvement in their calls-for-service ratio. They dropped about 50%, 57% drop in calls-for-service over that 12-month period. So, a pretty noticeable improvement. And then here you see the difference between the first year that we had, that we took those statistics, 2017, go to the first licensing year of 2019 to 2020, and then the second year of 2021 to 2022. You see both of those had a net decrease as well from the Denver West. West 40 had a little bump during the middle, but were able to bring it down significantly in the third year. So again, definitely seeing some progress. And again, seeing more of the same here. Respecting your time, we won't go through all those, but I think you guys are seeing the trends here, at least for a significant number of the motels. Not all of them, but a significant number of them. As far as moving forward, some of the things to consider, we're in collaboration with planning regarding nuisance and abandoned property ordinance. Again, that's not part of the lodging license ordinance, but it is something that comes up when we start talking about some of these properties that if they do end up surrendering their license and not moving forward as a lodging license facility, our lodging license ordinance no longer applies to them. And so if we have abandoned properties, obviously that's a concern, so we'll touch on that a little bit. We've also come up with some changes that we're going to present as far as recommendations to consider to update the current ordinance. And then we're also, at your request, we prepared a review of the calls-for-service ratio to give some examples of what that might look like if we change that calls-for-service ratio number. Okay, as far as the nuisance abandoned properties ordinance, again, this has been identified as a city priority. Again, this is probably nothing new to everyone in here. There's an ordinance that's currently being drafted by planning. Again, that's not part of our lodging license ordinance, but again, it can be, there's a little bit of overlap there with some of those properties, so that's why we're bringing it forward here. Because if we do have a closed license lodging establishment, I think we've seen that at least in one instance that has had some issues. least in one instance that has had some issues that we're trying to address. Because again, once they're no longer a licensed lodging facility, this ordinance doesn't have any application to that property. Again, some of these issues are being researched. I don't know that we've got any resolution on these yet, but it's things that they're looking at as far as a revolving loan fund to assist with development of those properties, as well as increased property taxes for those that are left vacant. But again, that's, will be on the scope of what we're doing tonight. I think everyone's part was present for the July presentation, we'll be talking more about, again, about that later this year. Okay, as far as our recommended changes to the lodging license ordinance as it stands now, the first recommendation we have is to expand the definition of significant criminal For this one, we're recommending is adding to that definition, so that it would read that significant criminal act means an act or acts that causes serious bodily injury or death to any person, or any act that involves the use of a deadly weapon that poses a threat of or causes injury to life or property, or acts that require a law enforcement specialized unit or tactical response team. Essentially, the verbiage that we're recommending that we add is that any act that involves the use of deadly weapon that poses a threat of or causes injury to life or property. The idea may be if we have an incident where deadly weapon is involved, luckily no one gets injured, right now, we can't address that as a significant criminal event. So if we have a drive-by shooting at a motel, that doesn't fit our current definition, but it would fit in something like this. So it just would seem to be a possible application of that ordinance, or that section of the Second recommendation is just adding clarifying language to our definition of calls for service. The current definition of the calls for service for, this is 5.56.010 subsection B, calls for service means and includes, but is not limited to, any and all calls to law enforcement that result in a representative being dispatched or directed to the lodging facility. What we're proposing is adding either in person, by telephone, or through any other electronic medium, essentially a call for service for a criminal act, whether we respond in person or have to follow up with it later via phone report, electronic report. It's still a resource, and it's still an incident that we need to investigate, whether someone actually shows up or not. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So this might be a fraud, motor vehicle theft, cold assaults, things like that, where we don't have someone who responds in person at the time, but we do have someone assigned, whether from investigations or patrol agents that follow up on that later on. So that was the addition on that definition. Recommendation three, there's an error in section 5.56.010, oh, I'm sorry, 080 subsection B. That refers to a subsection that doesn't exist. So hopefully, if you have any questions on that, I'll try to resolve those, but that one's fairly straightforward as far as correcting the error. And the next two are going to be involving customer service, and this one also involves consistency. We're recommending that we remove the term business and to make it consistent with other sections of the ordinance, because it says not less than 10 days. In the other sections of the ordinance, we want to just remove the word business to just make that, so it's consistent across the board. And then we also want to make or add the addition of allowing email notification and providing information via email, because we discovered that is the preferred medium of sharing information for all of our folks that we're dealing with, with the managers and owners and everything. That just seems to be more convenient for them. So we want to give that option as well. And same thing for recommendation number five, is that gives us the option of providing notice to licensees by first-class mail or email. And that's the only change as far as, but still has at least 10 days prior to the hearing, so they still have the information, they still have it in the same amount of time. It's just providing the electronic method of delivering that information. Okay, and then we will move into the calls for service ratio review. Again, this was at the request of council to look at if we're interested in changing the calls for service ratio. Our current call for service ratio is at 1.89. That was determined at the time based on the top 40% or the highest 40% of the lodging facilities and the statistics that they had at the time. If you look at making some of the changes here, so 1.89, we have, right now, we have 11 of the facilities that are above 1.89. If we reduce that to 1.8, it would still stay at 11. If we move down to 1.6, we would add one, so we'd have 12. So again, we start, the lower we make that number, the more properties we would be affected by that, or that would be, would fall under that calls for service ratio. And again, 1.4 goes down to 14. Again, 1.2 is 18, and then we went down to a one call for service per room ratio, make it up to 19. So that kind of gives you an idea of what some of those numbers would look like in the increase in the numbers of properties that would be affected by those. At this point, we don't recommend lowering the calls for service ratio. Again, that was set by council back in 2019. Most of the lodging establishments have been working towards achieving that number, and in good faith, they've been trying to achieve that number. If we're moving the goal, it's going to make it more difficult for those folks that are making efforts, making strides to reach that number. And the success that we've seen, it does seem that it's being effective at addressing those most significant problem locations. And with that, I will sit down with my former partner now, boss. And we will answer your questions.
Well, Sergeant, thank you, and, you know, council, I'd like to open it up for questions if you have one or two, and focus it on the presentation tonight, a couple of the recommendations going forward. And I would just say two things. One, I appreciate the recommendation of not increasing, knowing that people are trying to work, and that goes to really what the intent was, was to try to get better partnership, better compliance with our operators to ensure that they could still stay in business, and but also decrease the resources and the danger to the neighborhoods, as well as the danger to those staying. So I appreciate this approach, and certainly support the recommendations going forward. Counselor Olber.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm fine with all of the recommendations. I would actually make a comment to the city manager, sorry, not the city manager, the city attorney, and follow up with what I mentioned in the study session earlier, in that now we have the definition of calls for service. We've seen two ordinances tonight with, that both deal with lodging, and we have two definitions. And I would hope that, well, I would think that at some point, that's going to bite us. And I would think that, just from a legal standpoint, that we should be concise, and that's all. Yeah, and that's it. You get it. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. So I have some questions about the language that was chosen, firstly, with significant criminal act, and why that was, it seemed to me that the original language was very on point with what we were trying to achieve, and this new language seems a lot more vague and expanded to me. So when we're saying somebody posing a threat of injury to property, for instance, what do we mean by that exactly? Why was that put in there? And sort of what are we trying to accomplish with that? Because it seems to me that we're trying to primarily accomplish keeping people safe. So I'm just wondering what we're thinking. That seems very vague to me and hard to define in court. So that was my first question, and then I have a second one as well.
I think that's a good question. I think just to clarify, I guess as an example, we've had several shooting incidents at the motels where just through sheer luck, someone wasn't hit. And so, but because no one was hit, it didn't fit the significant criminal event, even if you had 15 or 20 rounds fired from a firearm into a building or into the neighborhood, which again is a safety concern to the people in those motels and the surrounding neighborhoods. And we just felt that this language dealt more specifically, I mean, it does expand the definition, that is true, but it's dealing more specifically when a deadly weapon is involved, and there's a threat to people, or in this case, if they're shooting into the building. Obviously, it's, if, just because a person wasn't there, then I guess a person wasn't in danger, but again, that's, that sort of behavior just generally does pose a danger to those folks. That was where we were going with that, if that helps shed some light on that.
I guess I would just think that the threat of causing injury to life is the main objective there. And so the threat of causing injury to property, I don't know that to me that belongs in there, but that's just kind of my take on it. The second question I had for you was with regard to the language added under the definition of calls for service to include any, this is how I understand it, to include any response whatsoever, whether it's in person, by telephone, or through electronic means. And I just wondered if you could explain why you wanted to expand it, and what does it mean exactly? So if an officer responded with a text, that that would include a call for service, for instance, or with an email? And why would an officer be responding with that kind of means rather than telephone or in person, would be my question. Thanks.
So again, a good question. We do have the ability to take electronic reports, we take internet reports, we do telephone reports, things like that, and those do require follow-up and do require investigation, so just like if it was if we responded in person, and just so that we're accurately tracking those incidents as well, because if we get a, again, a call, we call it a cold assault, assault where the, maybe the suspect isn't on scene, maybe they called from a different location and out of the city, and we didn't respond because it was several hours old or something like that, we may still take a report over the phone or electronically, if they do it over, generally it's going to be over the phone for a report like that. But the way that it's currently worded, we haven't been using those or recording those as a call for service when it really is still an incident that occurred at one of the motels. It does still require police resources to be used to investigate those and to look into those as well. So we're just trying to make sure that we're able to capture that information as well, to try and make sure that those numbers are accurate and consistent, to make sure that we're consistently applying those for all of the lodging license facilities.
Okay, thank you for your response.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, is there a consensus on the recommendations to bring forward? Okay, so we appreciate it, and there's consensus to bring those forth with whatever that looks like, and appreciate all the hard work and all that you do for us. Looks like next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items, both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity and moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by city council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the items into the record?
The consent agenda consists of items eight through 13. Item eight, ordinance O 2022-15, amending Title III, Chapter 3.04 of the Lakewood Municipal Code. By repealing the existing Chapter 3.04 and replacing it with a revised Chapter 3.04, all in reference to establishing the purchasing policies of the city of Lakewood, Colorado. Item nine, ordinance O-2022-16, to rezonate a portion of land located at 1031 South Union Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado, 80228, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado. Item 10, ordinance O 2022-17, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 14.05 of Title 14 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, including adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Code Council's International Plumbing Code, including appendancies B, C, D, and E, with deletions and amendments as set forth below, and establishing penalties for violation thereof. Item 11, ordinance O-2022-18, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 14.10 of Title 14 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2018 edition of the International Code Council's International Fuel Gas Code, with deletions and amendments as set forth below, and establishing penalties for violation thereof. Item 12, approving minutes of the city council meetings. City council regular meeting, August 8, 2022. City council regular meeting, August 22, 2022. Item 13, accepting minutes of the boards and commissions. Board of Appeals, June 28, 2022.
Okay, and I would just note that there are presentations on Lakewood speaks for items 10 and 11, and I guess I would ask for a motion on the consent.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of city council minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. I would just make one comment if it would be beneficial. Ms. McKinney-Brown, this would be many people's, many members' first rezoning, and so potentially a quick primer on that process and quasi-judicial might be beneficial. I know in the past, we had done that, so that might be beneficial for the group.
Right now?
No, no, certainly not right now. No, thank you.
Yes, I can say that.
Yeah, might be helpful, okay. All right, so there's a motion and a second on the consent, minus the caffir on rezoning. Please cast your votes. Okay, that passes 10 aye, 1 nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move into general business. So as we have mentioned in the past, our meetings are going to be a little bit different in October due to having that extra week in case we don't pass a budget, to make sure that we pass a budget. So rather than Mr. Rob trying to track down three or four of you to sign special notices for special meetings, I have a motion that would then make this official tonight by setting these in place. So my motion would be to move to call a hybrid special meeting for 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3, for the first public hearing on the revised 2022 and proposed 2023 city budget. So that is one, so I'll need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and again, that's to call a hybrid special meeting for 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 3, for the first public hearing on the revised 2022 and proposed 2023 budget. Counselor Olver, I think you wanted to speak about something else, so I'll, okay? Yeah, you're right. So forgive me, I'm going to have to ask to remove that motion. We're not meeting on Tuesday.
Monday, October 3.
Okay, I have Tuesday on my script, so.
You don't have to remove that. You just made a misstatement, said Tuesday instead of Monday, but the motion was correct.
Okay, so just to correct, the motion will be for Monday, October 3. Thank you. that clarification, Counselor Oliver. Please cast your votes. That passes 11 ayes, zero nays. Okay, and then I'll make a motion to call a hybrid special meeting for 6:00 PM on Monday, October 17. Is that correct, a Monday?
Yes.
Okay, for Monday, October 17, for the second public hearing on the revised 2022 and proposed 2023 budget.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 11 ayes, zero nays. I'll come back to you, Counselor Oliver. Counselor Strom had actually signaled this out a couple weeks ago when we said that we'd put this under general business. Unfortunately, it didn't get into the packet under general business. There was a miscommunication on my part. So I'm going to let her again explain what this assignment would be. If council feels comfortable moving this to LAC tonight, we can. If you don't, then we'll put it towards general business in a couple more weeks.
Mayor, there was a third motion to call a special meeting for the LRA budget hearing as well.
I don't I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Oh, that I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if we needed to call a special meeting for the LRA since they meet off cycle. But that motion would be in order to to a but to the same city council budget meeting. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Let me just clarify, though. Can the city council call the LRA meeting? Or do we have? Does LRA have to call it?
You know what? It should be called by the LRA. It should be called by the LRA. And thank you for pointing that out. Too many things.
Okay.
Right. I wasn't sure how to handle that one.
Yeah. So will we have time to do that at another regular meeting for the LRA?
That one may be easier just to have people just sign it.
Okay. Well, two out of three. Okay. So thank you. And that's all right. And we'll go to Counselor Strom.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to hand over something to our wonderful Lakewood Advisory Commission to do some research, as we know that they love to do. I've been receiving feedback quite consistently that, you know, we all know that that crime is is a concern within our community. And speeding and unsafe streets is a big part of the the crime that we're, you know, also talking about. We have around different areas of the Denver Metro speed cameras that are in place to try to honestly change behaviors, but also catch speeders, which ultimately the desire is to make our streets safer. So what I wanted to do was, I do believe, as a city, as a council, it is incumbent upon us to listen to our residents and the concerns that they've got, and to truly look into what options we have out here for solutions. And given the current realities that we have, and knowing that Lakewood PD manpower is not the only thing that can solve some of these problems, what could it look like? What would it cost? And could it be effective if we put a program in place that included some cameras to help change behaviors and reduce speeding with the end goal of making our streets safer, not just for other cars, but for our walkers, for our kids, for our bicycles? So what I wanted to do, I've got this priority that I had submitted with the requests that we send it to the LAC to look at what's been done across the nation, so that we can come back to have a decision on whether that's something that we want to entertain having in place here in Lakewood.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I was wondering if you would be open to expanding the the study session to include a couple of other points, which would be people running red lights and other types of we were having some significant issues along Morrison Road and Bear Creek. We've seen a number of accidents. And again, I'm not sure where I land on this. I really want to know more about this. But the goal is to increase safety. And it's not just people speeding speeding, but it's also distracted driving, going through lights that have turned red, and turning while pedestrians are crossing, putting a lot of our residents at risk. So I just didn't know if you'd be open to expanding that slightly to include a couple more scenarios.
Absolutely.
Counselor Oliver, then Counselor Abel.
Okay, yeah, that's a great idea, actually. And and Ward 4, you were talking about Morrison Road. And yes, there's been some fatal accidents right there. And Ward 5 and 4, Morrison is the border between 5 and 4, but all the residents live in 4 that that work on Morrison. So I'm not sure if everybody knew this, but I was talking to traffic engineering months ago about putting in just the not not speeding cameras, but radar cameras. And I talked to them about when would they were turned on. Because what can happen there, actually, is the the radar can be turned on or turned off, and they can they're still measuring the speed. And that's one of the things that can be passed on the LAC as one of the things that possibly can lower speeding along there and other places. I didn't explain that very well, did I? Okay, you know about the radar signs where it displays the speed a car is coming at the radar, right? Well, the first question becomes, does drivers seeing that sign lower their speed? And generally, the answer is yes. The second question becomes, if the sign isn't even turned on, do they lower their speed? In other words, if it doesn't display how fast the people are going, do they see this sign and go, oh, my goodness, there's a radar camera there. Maybe it's a radar camera, or maybe it's a speed limit camera, or whatever you were talking about. So there's a lot of things to discuss there that I'd love to see passed along the LAC. Specifically, a long time ago, I was even talking about a roundabout in there. I don't know if you want to expand your request to even look at a roundabouts. And I would talk love to look at roundabouts along Morrison Road, every one of those intersections. Do you think that's a good idea to include that? Or do you want to leave that out? Because that's a bit more.
I would say that would be a separate request.
I would too, yeah.
And I know one of the challenges with Morrison is that's a state highway.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it takes a combination of Lakewood and Colorado to and that's going to take forever. Whereas we could do something like speed cameras pretty quickly. And in fact, they went up pretty quickly when we started talking about Morrison Road there. So yeah, I'd love your idea.
Thank you. While I am a bit concerned about Big Brother, every nearly every night, I live at Sixth and Fourth and Wadsworth, and nearly every night I hear motorcycles going down through what they call the tunnel on Sixth Avenue from Wadsworth to Sheridan, screaming through there. We don't have enough officers to post them out there every night or even less frequently than that. And I think this would be a good way to monitor that and catch the bad doers and and find them. It's a dangerous situation, and somebody is going to die. And I don't want it to be that motorcyclist or that guy in the hot car either. I certainly don't want it to be an innocent citizen that gets caught up in the in the quest for speed. So I'm certainly willing to talk about this and support it. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a consensus that this would go to the LAC for further study with a couple of those additions.
May I ask why we would have to send it to LAC? This is the sort of thing that we might want to just go ride head on with.
Well, the submittal was for the LAC to dig in and do the research. So that's why.
Data dive.
Yeah.
What research is there to be done? That's kind of my question.
I would say effectiveness. I would say what is the true impact on community? I would say what is the cost of it? And is there, you know, what is the return on investment? Is it there? Does it really change behaviors? Do we want to spend money on something that may not? So those are the kinds of things I would look to hear about.
Okay, thank you.
So continue with general business, Counselor Oliver.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. I didn't know that Turumo representatives were coming in here tonight. But I did watch the EPA presentation about a month ago. I think the mayor gave us a heads up on when that was going to happen. I'd love to see a show of hands on how many other councils. I know a bunch of you were on that also watching. So I mean, there's at least four or five of us. So I'd just like to tell the general public that, yeah, we're on top of this one. We are watching what's going on there. And we're paying attention. And Mayor, you mentioned September 22 is the next EPA meeting. And that one's going to be here. The one we watched recently, it's not going to be here. The one we watched was on Zoom, and we all logged in. But I thought for sure there was another one coming up here. Ah, okay, so it's virtual, but it's about this specific site in Lakewood. And the other one, where they were talking about 100 different sites nationwide, but one ours is one of the ones they're worried about. Anyway, I'm a bit of an alarmist. And so when I heard about the whole thing and the maps that they put out, I was like, whoa, I've got to watch this. And after watching the whole presentation, if I lived next to there, I wouldn't be moving right now. But I'd be watching my city council to make sure that we were on top of it. And I think we are. And so stay tuned, I guess, for that one. The second topic I had was was brought up in public comment. There's there's land on the Federal Center that was up for sale a little while ago. And then there was bid bids on it, and then it was taken away. GSA decided not to sell it. And now it's back on the market. And I've learned a few things about it I'd like to pass along. It's it's the northwest corner of the Federal Center, basically near Sixth and and Union. And if if you're interested in it, you could actually Google federal land for sale, and then drill down to realestate sales.gov, and then look at land, and then look under Federal Center, 59 acres. It's sitting right there. And the bid's open on Wednesday, so two days from now. I've happened to be talking to representatives from Green Mountain Water and Sanitation. They have already gotten three inquiries from developers to see if they could provide water and sewage to there. And I don't know where that's going to go. But one of those developers asked if if Green Mountain Water could provide water for 1,700 taps. So that's quite a bit of quite a bit of a building that might go on there. But there's something that that really does bother me a lot about it. And that was that on that page, I was just discussing, there's and it says there's an update from the City of Lakewood's FAQ. And I'm going to read it. It says, if at the point development would cause Union and Fourth intersection to reach its capacity, the city has noted a bridge connecting Route and Quail Street will be needed. The city has updated the FAQ with a note. The city is open to funding all or part of this connection through tax increment financing, or TIFs. And the city city staff will work with the developer on the creation of an urban renewal area to allow for the TIF, and will advocate for such a solution to Lakewood City Council. And that one bothers me in a couple of ways. It's a field. And I look at urban renewal, and I go, well, it's renewal. It's not newel. I'm not so sure that that would be where we should be using urban renewal. But the worst part was where it says that city staff will advocate for the developer to Lakewood City Council. I'm hoping that city staff is impartial on all these topics. And to see it in writing from the city that they're going to advocate to us, it makes me wonder, okay, are they going to tell us the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Are they going to give us some of the story that makes the developer look good? It worries me a lot when it says that the city is advocating for developers. There was, oh, by the way, before I finish that, farther down in the FAQ, we also note that the intersection of Union and Fourth is near its capacity right now. So you put in, you think about it, put in 1,700 units, 2,000, 3,000 more cars, that intersection's going over its capacity. And then you would have to build a bridge. But then you think about it, a bridge over Sixth Avenue, right next to the light rail bridge, that's going to cost. I have no idea what it's going to cost, but 10 million, it sounds like probably a low estimate. And and you could correct me later on. It's more, yes, that's a low estimate. So it's more than $10 million. That that seems like, whoa. But none of this is set in stone, I'm saying. I'm just going bringing it up, letting the people know this is what's going on. There could be other things coming down the pike. But back to that advocating, there was, who was it? The City of Florence, all the counselors resigned back in February. And at that time, one of them, in her resignation letter, whatever, said this, and I'm going to quote it, "We are also subject to making decisions with the information that we are provided, whether it is accurate and complete or not." And I could have written that even back then. But then I look at the the thing about the city staff going to advocate to the city council for the developers, and I just kind of roll my eyes a bit on this. So I'm I'm hoping city staff is a little bit more impartial about what they bring to us. And I hope they're complete. And I hope they don't advocate for developers, or anybody for that matter. And I hope that, you know, I want to see two sides of a story so I can make the right decision at the right time. If I only get one side, then pretty much I'm going to lean to that side. And everybody else here is too. So that that's pretty much a big problem to say that advocate that city staff is advocating for somebody in front of this body. Thanks. That's all I have.
So I sent a link to the EPA meeting to all the council, just in case you did not have that. So that is in your inbox. Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to go back two or three weeks to when a couple of community members addressed us about the publication of ordinances and amendments there, too. When we take our oath, we promise to uphold the city charter, not part of it, not smaller parts, or but all of it. In fact, when Barbara and I were first elected and took our first oaths of office, we didn't take the oath that was prescribed by charter. City Hall, I guess, was so unfamiliar with the charter, they weren't aware it was there or had forgotten. So the next week, the next regular meeting, we took the oath again, with the correctment. Oh, and I forgot sharing. In this case, the reason is, you according to section 7.4.5, parents five of the city charter, we have to publish new ordinances by title. Amended ordinances have to include the amendments. And the reason is, if you pass a brand new ordinance, all of it's new, and everybody knows it's all new, and can look up the ordinance by title to see what it entails. If we amend an ordinance, and we don't push the amendments, then there is no virtual red line. If we amend an ordinance and we don't push the amendments, then there is no virtual redline. Folks cannot tell what we have changed easily. They have to compare both documents side by side, and that can be a real pain. I know there was a conversation, or I suspect there was a conversation, about what happened, why it was not published that way. And mistakes happen, you know? I made one back in 1942. But I would like to know why we decided not to correct our mistake. Because it does affect such things as the state constitutional right to direct democracy. If someone wants to file a referendum challenging any of those amendments, they don't even know what we passed. So while it seems a small thing, it has larger implications. So can someone tell me why we didn't go back and republish to correct our mistake and comply with the charter?
Mr. Robb or Ms. McKinnney-Brown?
Right. I think it's my understanding that city code says one thing about publications, and what Councilor Abel is referring to is language from the charter. And so we were told that we did publish the amendments online, and that satisfies the language in municipal code.
For clarification, the charter says, "If such ordinance is adopted by the city council, it shall be published by title only, except that any amendment to such ordinance shall be included in the publication." The city council passed ordinances expanding upon how the city council is going to interpret that line. And the way the city council's ordinance within the code reads, that the entire ordinance is always published. And it doesn't say that the amendments are pulled out of the ordinance, it says the entire ordinance is always published. So there may be people who read, "Except that any amendment to such ordinance shall be included in the publication," as requiring pulling the amendments out of the ordinance and publishing them separately. But the charter doesn't say, "Any amendment to such ordinance shall be included in the publication separately from the rest of the ordinance." And the city council's code does, it says exactly the opposite will happen. And it directs staff to publish the entire ordinance in full. So staff follows that direction. If the charter said that, "Except any amendment to such ordinance shall be included in the publication independently of the rest of the ordinance," it would happen that way. But at this point, because of the way the city council has interpreted that language, the city staff can only follow the direction of the city council, and that's what's happened.
May I respond, please? We can't change charter with code. Charter has to be changed by a vote of the people. This is very clear. It says that "any amendment to the ordinance shall be included in the publication." And didn't we publish that by title only? We published the entire ordinance. So how are people supposed to know what's new and what isn't?
That's a policy decision of the city council. But at this point, city council's directed that all ordinances are published in full every time. And so that's how they're published.
I don't read it that way, but thank you for the explanation.
Okay. All right. So we'll go ahead and go into, I don't think Ms. Hodgson has an executive report, no. So we'll go ahead and go into council members by ward. And if Ward 1 is ready, we'll start with Ward 1.
No report, but I believe my boardmate has an announcement.
Yes, thank you. So we, Ward 1 will be joining, I believe, all of the wards, a super meeting on October 1st around 9:30, around the, 9 o'clock, around the topic of affordable housing. And so we'll have a presentation come in from Metro West Housing to really reinforce that. And it's a great opportunity for us as councilors to hear what's coming from community on this topic, so we can take that information and move it forward. So excited for that. Councilor Abel and I, moving forward in October, will be returning to one meeting. But I am offering office hours over the next two weekends. And I just wanted to share that at the Fed Center this Saturday, trolley car rides from 10 to 3 p.m., so we're excited to highlight. If you're interested in the parcel of land that Councilor Olber was discussing, you may get a glimpse of that from the trolley. And I think that's probably it for me.
Great. Thank you. Ward 2?
No report. As Councilor shares, I said, we will be in attendance on October 1st to talk about affordable housing. It's of interest, obviously, to everybody, and so it seems like we don't need to drag our staff all over the land. We can all go learn about it together. And then Councilor Vincent and I are not having our regular ward meeting. We are also having office hours this month. I believe yours are, oh, I did not write yours down.
The same Wednesday.
The same Wednesday, but in the day at City Hall, at 12, from 12 to 2 at City Hall on the third Wednesday. And mine will be the evening before on that Tuesday. I'm still working on booking a location, but that will be published, obviously, of course, on the city website, but then also on my Facebook and my Instagram for those that want to be able to come find us.
Cool. Ward 3?
Okay, I can go first. Like the other wards, Ward 3 is going to be joining in this mega ward meeting for our October meeting. It's a topic that's of importance to our whole community. So again, let's not be redundant, and we're excited to join in on October 1st. More information is on the city website. I think probably the easiest way to find out about upcoming office hours and ward meetings is to just go to the homepage and type in "ward meetings" to the search bar. That, the address is long, so I would suggest that. I will be holding office hours here at City Hall tomorrow. That is the place that you can go to sign up for a one-on-one appointment if you would like to chat as well. And I just want to flag that Belmar is still having some of their summer events through the end of September. So come down on Fridays, there are food trucks and music and a really fun craft fair. It's a good time, and they're doing that through the end of September. So enjoy the nice weather while it lasts.
So as everybody's sort of talking about meetings and things that they're attending, I wanted to point out to my constituents, because people may not understand, that I continue to be sidelined by this city because of a failure to truly investigate into some of the threats that I received earlier this year. And I wanted to explain why I had asked the IT director last meeting about whether executive sessions over Zoom are cyber secure. And she said unequivocally that they are. And the reason that's important, and it seemed to bother some of the leadership that I brought this out, is that I have been systematically excluded from executive sessions regarding personnel matters, as I cannot come in person. And I have asked for a hybrid option for those. And the answer I received was, well, we don't do hybrid for executive sessions for personnel matters, which doesn't make sense to me, because it seems to me when we're doing executive sessions for, say, multimillion-dollar deals or IGAs with Morrison, or things of great import, that that would be even more concerning in terms of security and cybersecurity. However, we do do executive sessions over Zoom for those sorts of meetings. And so, you know, it just continues to be a concern to me that, and now we're scheduling the end-of-year sort of follow-up to the planning session we had at the beginning of the year, and just one date was given. And again, a date when I, as a single mother, cannot attend. And this just, it has occurred throughout my service on council and continues to occur, that I continue to be treated differently than everybody else. And even in our last council meeting, you know, where you have the mayor muting a counselor for asking questions of staff, is just very distressing and really a violation, continual violation of not only my First Amendment rights, but those of my constituents. This systematic unequal treatment, discrimination permitted week after week after week is just incredible. And I can't imagine any other walk of life where that would be permitted, but it is on this council for some reason. I wanted to comment on Josh Compton's comment in Public Comment that we discuss all these topics and spend all this time on things that are not the utmost priority in this city. And I totally agree with that comment. I think it's very unfortunate that we are just treated as figureheads and that we don't get to play a part in, you know, what's going to go on the agenda and what is the most important to our constituents. And if we only have 125 Airbnbs in the city, why are we pouring hours and hours and hours of our time into that? And so I would love to see us change that. And finally, I wanted to reiterate one more time what I had said last week, which is of great importance to me, that I found out that litigation reports involving anything to do with the police department have been kept from me secretly without a voted council, without informing me of that. To me, this is completely unethical and illegal. A counselor being denied legal services and information that's meant to help me make decisions on behalf of my constituents, this is a very, very big deal. And I will be following up on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ward 4?
Okay. Yeah, the next Ward 4 meeting is going to be October 12th, that's a Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. I haven't actually found the location yet, but it's going to be in person. The topic's going to be traffic engineering. I know, it sounds a little dry and boring, but we're going to be talking about how do you finance roads when you don't have that gas tax and you have electric vehicles everywhere? Smart traffic lights that know you're coming instead of just with cameras, as opposed to little circle or magnetic sensors in the ground. Traffic lights that are going to communicate with your car in the future and let your car know when they're going to turn, so the car, it could be a self-driving car. It knows the speed to go to hit that red light when it's green. Bicycle route connectivity, and then who decides which streets gets paved and when. So there's actually a lot of interesting topics that are underneath the umbrella of traffic engineering. And I'll see you there. Bye.
Okay, Ward 5?
Okay, so Wendy's going to talk about the ward meeting in October, but I'm still having my crime summit or my crime forum talk on September 25th, Sunday, September 25th, from 1:00, 2:30, 2 o'clock to 3:30 at the Belmar Library. And I hope to see you there. I'm getting a lot of really good speakers coming to talk about a lot of things that have happened in our legislative that we could probably fix. And I'm hoping we can do something about that. So thank you.
Well, we have a special meeting to announce that's already been announced a few times. The ward meeting for Ward 5, as I reported last time, is going to be Saturday, October 1st. And we had a lot of interest from other council members over, well, since the announcement. So I'm excited that we'll be having a super meeting. We are excited to be welcoming our co-councilors and other Lakewood residents from all wards to come and learn what affordable housing is. So we've got Tammy Fisher from Metro West Housing Solutions, she's the CEO. She'll be presenting an Affordable Housing 101, and the title is "Everything You Didn't Know About Affordable Housing." It will be an eye-opening presentation that will help us really understand what affordable housing means and who it serves. For those of you that aren't familiar with Metro West Housing, they are Lakewood's housing authority. They're a nonprofit developer and are, they do things beyond just the development of the properties, but they're also there for residence services and property management. They administer also Housing Choice voucher program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So I'm very excited to learn more about what affordable housing looks like, what it means within our community, and also really grateful that all of you thought that it was likewise a topic that is so important, that you're welcome to venture down south to Ward 5. So we welcome any and all that would like to come. It will be at Westwood's Community Church. We will, for accessibility, be able to offer that hybrid as well. We have some amazing volunteers that help us pull that off. So for those of you that may not want to drive that far south, that's an option as well. We'll have all of that available on the website. A couple other QIPGOR 5 announcements that we've got, LakewoodTogether.org, there's a survey about dog parks, a new site has been identified as a potential dog park that's on Wadsworth, south of Yale, that actually is in a space of a property that we recently have acquired. So if you're interested, sign up or go in on LakewoodTogether.org, give us feedback about that location. It's a large one that will include trails and stuff, which is somewhat unique, actually. There's that. And then also, we've got National Public Lands Day coming up on September 24th. We've got Day of Service at the Bear Creek Green Belt. It's from 8 to noon. Volunteers will get to assist with projects like planting and habitat restoration. So very, very excited about that. Late breakfast will be provided. You will want to sign up on the website or email me if you'd like more information, wstrom@lakewood.org.
Great. Well, thank you all very much. Couple of just housekeeping notes. If you are interested in learning more about the Housing Policy Commission, those members chaired by Councilor Vincent are Counselor Sharazai, Counselor Springsteen, Counselor Franks, Counselor Strom, and myself. So those are the members of the Housing Policy Commission. If you're interested and would like to learn more, or you have ideas about housing, that's probably a good avenue to go. And just another piece, there was a date sent out for the retreat to start and just get a feel for if people were available. And I did not hear back from one counselor, still have not heard back, so it's news to me that that day wouldn't work. But we're trying to make sure with the virtual option that all can take part in that. So if that doesn't work, just please let us know that that doesn't work, and we can look for another day or another opportunity to have our yearly catch-up. Pretty excited to talk about Lakewood Linked, which is a group that was started and deals with bringing together the faith coalitions, our service clubs. And then the newest group was the Coalition to End Hunger in Lakewood. They received a $75,000 grant to look at building hubs in our neighborhood elementary schools that will not only provide food assistance, but look for tutoring opportunities, backpacks, all kinds of cool programs. So we met with the school district last week and some of those providers and started to begin that conversation. It's going to be a little bit up in the air where these are going to go because of the announcement of our school closures. So stay tuned for that, but I'm pretty excited, and I know those groups are, to really hone in and refocus their work in helping our community, and most importantly, helping our kids, which leads into the Jefferson County Public Schools and their announcement of five of Lakewood's elementary schools that are potentially going to be closed. So I'd encourage our communities to weigh in. One of those has our Boys and Girls Club as well. And so... And so where does that go? And my understanding so far is that would go to Lazly, potentially. So I think this council will be engaged. And then the next phase would be what happens when, if they do do the closures, what's that secondary piece of what starts to happen with these properties? And what does the future hold? So certainly a challenging time for our school district and for all of us that are engaged in these processes. Budget, budget books are out. Budget information is out. You heard us tonight talk a little bit about the changes. So, you know, feel free to reach out to staff with any questions that you have. There's a lot of information in those. So take the time, please, to do that. Had the great opportunity to host Senator Hickenlooper. He had a community meeting here with other mayors and other providers just to do a little listening on Jefferson County. And enjoy just having, it was an hour, it went by fast, but to have some opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on in Lakewood. And so with that, that's all that I have. And we will be done here at 9:15 PM. And it looks like we'll be back next week. So thank you all very much.